Good evening, I'd like to call the Quincy Public Schools Teaching and Learning Subcommittee to order, and before we start, I'd just like to let everybody know that anything that's in the Facility Subcommittee is going to be moved into the Facility Subcommittee meeting for consideration, so we won't be discussing a whole lot about the facilities. And now, Ms. O'Connor, go right ahead.
Okay, members of the school committee, good evening. I feel very privileged to be here tonight as the principal of Marymount School. Mr. Rogan, our assistant principal and fifth grade teacher, and I are here before you to present our school improvement plan. First, I would like to begin by thanking the school committee, Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins, as well as the SLT for the support they give me, our staff, and our students all year. It was my goal last year to continue to carry on Marymount traditions and lead the school through a year of change. We implemented a new core math curriculum universally across all grade levels. We began the shift to CKLA as our new core ELA curriculum, and we utilized the Open Parachute Program to support social and emotional health. We observed growth both academically, socially, and emotionally. Analysis of Marymount's MCAS results, as well as MAP data, show that the action steps and the initiatives that our school put in place last year had a great impact. According to the MAP assessment in the spring, the mean RIT score for students in grades two through five in reading, math, and science were all above the national norms on all assessments. We made progress towards all of our goals last year. In ELA, our kindergarten through grade two students exceeded the ELA goals for early literacy. Grades two, three, and five met their ELA goal as measured by MAP, and grade four made progress towards their goal. In math, grades two and three exceeded their stated goal as measured by MAP. Grades four and five made progress towards their goals. In science, grade four exceeded their goal as measured by MAP, and grade five made significant progress toward the goal. Our SEI goal for the implementation of open parachute lessons was exceeded. Students engaged in social-emotional learning opportunities with 93 lessons taught throughout the year. According to the spring MCAS, our students performed well. ELA and science data was strong. Our students found the math MCAS assessment more of a challenge, and that was reflected in the data. We did see growth throughout the year on all MAP assessments, and we used MMAP and MCAS data to guide us in drafting our goals for this school year, specifically a more focused math goal for each grade level. Overall, we are pleased with the progress our students made last year, and we hope that our goals and action steps this year will target areas to see increased growth. This year, in addition to monitoring early literacy skills with M-Class and reading skills with MAP, we've added an additional writing focus as part of our ELA goal. We've included action steps to focus on writing skills, as well as how to scaffold instruction and support for our EL students. After analyzing math data, we felt that targeting specific domains at each grade level was most appropriate. Supporting math teachers will be a priority for us as well. Similar to last year, we have new staff delivering this core curriculum. To assist our staff, time with our math interventionists and the math consultant has been set aside for consultation and support. Our science goal will have us monitoring growth using MAP data. New action steps highlight the integration of science vocabulary and the effort to strengthen science and engineering practices. Our fourth goal focuses on increasing the number of students who feel respected, especially when sharing feelings, and how to manage peer conflict. It is evident from the spring vocal data that our students feel positive overall at Marymount, however, there are areas of climate and school culture that we will continue to work on throughout the year. Our staff remains committed to creating a positive school climate and culture. We will work with students throughout the day to provide a constructive environment that supports academic, social, and emotional growth. Mr. Rogan and I have reflected on last year, and we realized that we would not have been able to accomplish what we did without working together. We began to lay the foundation for a strong collaborative culture with the hopes of building collective capacity. With guidance from the district, we have established a coherent vision for our core instruction, including social-emotional learning. We want to build on this this year with time for collaboration, data work, and collaborative tasks, like looking at student work and offering options for teachers to spend time in each other's classrooms. We really feel like this will be an integral part of our work this year with our staff, especially our new staff.
Thank you. As we began to meet together as a staff and collaborate during our principal PDs and A-Day one, we really realized that as we were brainstorming some of our action steps, one of the greatest strengths that we had was each other. And we were able to approach our action steps and the creation of those action steps with a team mindset. Kim Quinn and Bridget Vaughn have provided us with amazing communication, numerous resources, and consistent professional development, access to coaches and consultants, as we've been implementing IM and CKLA. Working together in our vertical teams, we've been able to strengthen our understanding of those programs, including the pacing, scope, and sequence, and the prerequisite skills at each grade level, so that we could broaden our understanding as we implemented those programs in our own grade levels. Our teams don't stop there, of course, since our math interventionists, special education teachers, EL teacher, literacy teachers have been able to add their insight and their expertise as well in the implementation and the brainstorming of those action steps. We believe that those action steps that you see before you reflect a collaborative spirit. They promote discussion, they promote and encourage teamwork, and they allow each of us to have a voice in the process. In addition to our vertical teams, we also find strength in our grade level teams. It's within these teams that we're able to implement additional ideas and initiatives that not only promote academic success, but also promote family engagement and a sense of community. Whether it's our kindergarten Pirate Day, our first grade alphabet countdown, third grade heroes in history, the fifth grade holiday bazaar, or Ms. Shea Connor and Mr. Rogan's P-B-I-S show, we know that these initiatives wouldn't be possible without consistent teamwork. It takes teamwork to plan and implement. With that comes increased student engagement, learning opportunities, and family participation. Last, but perhaps our strongest teams are those consisting of our students and our staff members. These teams go above and beyond the typical teacher-student relationships through various initiatives such as our kindness crew. Our teachers and students work together to spread positivity throughout the school, delivering anonymous letters with compliments, adding positive shout-outs to the morning announcements, spreading cheer with our monthly kindness card, and on the cover of our school improvement plan draft that you have in front of you, that photograph, that's our October kindness crew that you see there. Our regular open parachute lessons in restorative circles also promote the spirit of team building, creating opportunities for valuable discussions that strengthen the relationships of all of those in a class. And that allows for more positive and collaborative school and class cultures. So there's always more work to be done, but we realize that since we have each other to lean on, it doesn't seem quite so daunting.
Our sense of community is strong within the walls of our building, and that feeling extends beyond as well. In addition to our school-based teams, we work closely with our school council, our PTO, and our EDI team. Last year, we surveyed our school community about communication in an effort to engage as many families as possible. With 20 different languages spoken, we transitioned to sending communication out via S-MoR and school messenger to ensure our families are able to access information. We want to continue strengthening and supporting our community as it grows and changes. School celebrations and gatherings were held throughout the year to build enrichment and welcome families into the building. In addition to community events like the trunk or treat, the fun run, the winter concert, our EDI team worked hard to expose our students to different themes throughout the year to celebrate our differences and our diversity. Themes included neurodiversity, Muslim Heritage Month, and Older Americans Month, and our unique families, to name a few. We introduced new ways to gather, together with Lunar New Year and that school-wide parade, parent volunteer readers in classrooms during Black History Month, and interviews of women in the Marymount community highlighting their career paths and family bingo night. We had the return of an incredible international night with music, dancing, and food. This month, to celebrate winter holidays around the world, we are publishing the Marymount Cookbook, which includes recipes from around the world as a way to celebrate the diversity in our school. In addition to sharing our school improvement plan with our school council, we also shared our proposed goals with our entire school community. We are committed to the different ways people work together within our school to improve not only our student learning, but the overall school experience for our students. We welcome any questions, thank you.
Let's give you a... I have a general question, just for everyone, you know, but thank you, thank you for all that. Sounds like you're doing a great job there, and the kids are lucky, and they're having a good experience. So when we do the MAP scores, right, it's all year-long, which is great, and I love that, because we can see the growth in, you know, where kids need help or whatever might be happening in the school during the school year. Do we ever look at seeing if the MAP scores, once, like in the spring, if they reflect the growth in the MCAS, like when we get the MCAS results? So if we see that, you know, kids, maybe the scores were a little different at the beginning of the year, and then we do all the maps, you know, from the fall till the next spring, do the next year's MAP, I mean, MCAS, kind of reflect the work that we've been doing during the year? Do we ever see that as a... Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because I know they're both so different, and that there are such different assessment tools, but does that, you know...
And they are different assessment tools, and anyone can jump in wherever, but because, as you know, the MAP is adaptive, so it kind of meets the child where they're at. Sometimes it can be a predictor for where they'll fall, they will fall, as far as the MCAS, but in the case for us, for example, for math, it wasn't so much so last year, where we saw tremendous growth throughout the year, but didn't quite see that with the MCAS.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, I think the MAP scores, from my perspective, listening to everyone, gives you a more real-time, you know, real sense of what's happening. My other question was, you know, when I was looking at the data through all these presentations was, so let's say the third grade, we have a MAP score or an MCAS score in third grade, and then as we all spoke about the fact that that third grade moves on to fourth grade, so the third grade score is different because it's different kids, right? When we do it again, do we ever track students like third, fourth, the same cohort of students from third, fourth, and fifth to see if they're making changes based on the goals that we do during the year? The same group of third graders to the fourth grade and to the fifth grade?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yes, so, I mean, obviously, we have access to all that information, so this year, actually, I created a chart, and I know that other schools did that as well, where we were able to really track the cohort as they advanced through the grade levels, to be able to look at trends.
Yeah, because I think it would, it makes sense, right, to see if what we're doing is really being effective with that group of kids as we're going forward.
Right, and so with that data, then when we meet during the A-Days, that's something that the vertical teams get together and look at, so that they can see those trends.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Santoro?
Just to follow up on the same question. On page 28, the spring assessment of MCAS. The 2022 scores and the 2023 scores are two different groups, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm good.
Just to follow up, just to follow up again on the same thing, I think it would be really interesting to hear from Erin and our data folks about those questions exactly, because we have heard from some folks that, from one person, that there was a problem in vocabulary on MCAS, but MAP showed a strength in vocabulary. And so it would be really nice to know. I think we've been putting a whole lot of effort into this, to see the correlation. And also, I'm assuming when you look, as the cohort moves up, their scores may drop, but the test might be looking for something different. It is looking for something different. But to see if there's any trend in what, and I think that's what you do when you talk about, whether it's geometry or computation, or you're looking at the exact trends of the students to see what those students need as they move forward.
Right, and I think for our map math goal this year, that's why we broke it down into the different domains for the different grade levels, because we looked at a combination of not only the MAP scores, but also the MCAS scores.
And what particular strengths or domains they were struggling with. Yeah, so that was my only question. I think there's a true feeling of community there from the two of you, meaning the whole place just exudes that because of the two of you and your leadership, so it's a pleasure to see that school running and to be around it. Mrs. Hubley, you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you very much, the presentation was wonderful. Just a quick question, I know we're not talking about the facilities, because we're going to move it into our subcommittee, but you did write in here, "regeneration of the media center to create a small classroom." I just wanted to know what that was for.
Yeah, so the hope is, is that we have a very large media center, and that we would like to carve out maybe some additional space for an art room. So that's the hope, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Rogan?
There's no writing down today.
It's a classroom, though. In a garden classroom.
Good question. I know I'm... When does an incident happen at a school, or something happen at a school, rise a level of time? Because I looked through these, and it's...
Well, we encourage incident reports when we get incident reports from our school every day, so. Like, my...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All right.
So we do a case-by-case analysis, but we always encourage incident reports, just to make sure that any incident of concern is chronicled. So I don't know if there's anything specific with regard to a particular incident, but certainly if it's confidential, you can give me a call. But typically, we encourage incident reports on any incidents, really, that happened in the school. So, again, it's case-by-case, and it would have to be case-specific, but if you have something in particular, you can feel free to give me a call.
I do not, I'm just struck by the fact that most of the elementary schools are looking at the network. In the public survey...
I don't know, we get incident reports every day from the schools, so...
Yeah, and Mr. Rogan, I think that the incident information that's on the back of the school improvement plan, that does not necessarily equal incident report, but it could, but it doesn't indicate whether or not the person filed an incident report. So as the superintendent said, we get incident reports daily from multiple schools, schools in this room, but that's just the, that's just the discipline data that we report to the state, which is, you know, incidences that we have to keep track of, which I would say the majority actually are incident report-worthy if you're, if we're filing with the state on an incident. Certainly, if it's a suspension, in elementary school, it's required that you need to send one up if it's a, if you're suspending. It has to go through the superintendent if you're suspending someone in elementary school. So definitely the school, so I'm not, I don't know, I'm not sure what page you're looking at, but that is not, that doesn't mean that they don't do incident reports, they absolutely do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry, 25, yeah. So this is, so this is what we report to the state. It just so happens that Marymount did not have any incidences that rose to that level, you know, which I think a lot of elementary schools might not have incidences that rise to that level. Middle schools and high schools definitely are going to see more. But elementary schools, that doesn't mean that they don't do incident reports, because there might be a situation where, you know, I can give you an example, maybe a student in kindergarten fights another student, or something like that, something that, you know, might be, they would do an incident report on something like that. So I think, like, that doesn't necessarily mean we're not reporting to the state on a kindergarten interaction, per se, you know, it wouldn't necessarily rise to that level, but the school would do an incident report so that we would be aware. Like, in particular, like lots of times, we see incident reports in elementary school for students in the CARES program, the STARS program, you know, but, but those are specific programs, we're not suspending kids for, you know, out of those programs, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so these incidents, these are the ones that have been reported back to us from the state, so these are what come back to us in the official SSDR report, from the Student Safety and Discipline Report. So we send numerous amounts of incidents, it could be anything from a tardy for a class or a skipped class, et cetera, these kinds of things, but typically what they flag or what they choose to put on the SSDR report that comes back to us is anything that resulted in a loss of learning time, so whether that's an in-house suspension, out-of-school suspension, those kinds of things are what they deem as reportable incidents.
In-school fight would absolutely be an incident report, yes. And potentially, it could be, depending on what happens, the situation, it probably would be a suspension. Has not changed. You are absolutely correct.
Mr. Gudrow?
Thank you. Thank you for the excellent presentation. You know, I think Marymount historically has had great family engagement, amazing teachers, and a super PTO, you know, and that just continues. A couple of comments and questions. So kudos on, it looks like your chronic absenteeism dropped across the board in every category, sometimes markedly, which was terrific. But then the EL, in the accountability data, the EL proficiency also declined markedly. I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that.
And we are aware of that, and that's why some of the specific action steps, especially in EL, are targeted to our EL students. However, they did show high growth, so our EL and former EL students did show high growth in MCAS, in both the MAP, I mean, excuse me, the math and the ELA tests. But it is something that we are focused on, for sure, this year.
Great, and you mentioned 20 languages spoken at your school. I love when the principals come up and tell us how many languages spoken, and I've mentioned this to other principals. So in your vocal survey, it was roughly about 50% of the folks, students, report that they read books where they see similar people to them.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know if you pay attention to that.
We absolutely do, and Mr. Rogan and I were actually talking about that again today, which surprises us, and we always feel like with the vocal data, although that it's, it gives us a lot of great information, I think sometimes the students do struggle with the wording of the questions, and sometimes, even though we do have lots of literature that shows diverse characters and, and just a wide range of kids, other kids, and backgrounds, sometimes I think you have students who are answering questions, who very much feel like, you know, maybe the character isn't exactly who I am, a hockey player, a soccer player, a guitar player, and so that's sort of how they answer the question. But we do have a wide range of literature, and especially with CKLA, with that has updated, you know, the characters, the protagonists, the antagonists. We also have talked, as an EDI committee, to sort of pull the literature out, so in the classrooms, it's available, and teachers have libraries, but we actually talked about this year, just having a cart in certain places in the school for kids and teachers to just pull from, that tie in with our monthly themes, our EDI themes, just to boost that as well.
I think it was, I can't remember if, when we talked about this before, if it was Mrs. Lebo or Mrs. Hubley, that mentioned a discussion with students about, well, a character might not be your culture, there might be feelings, comparable feelings, so you can identify through that, or whatever the case may be. So some discussion before the reading to say, you might align on a couple of these areas, you should think about it that way, as opposed to, you know, simply appearance. I was going to mention the MCAS math, but that's been covered, so I won't go through that again. On the incident reports, I think it would be useful for the subcommittee to get the categories at some point that are reportable to the state, so that we understand which categories get reported to the state and why we don't see any that are in here. And that's just online. And then the last question, and I know Mrs. Lebo mentioned that everything is going into facilities around facility issues, but I wanted to ask you about the security camera, whether or not you had any incidents of graffiti or vandalism, and that's necessitating the ask for the security camera.
We have the outdoor classroom in the back of the school, so oftentimes, that does get visited over the weekend and in the evenings, and so I think that was what prompted the request for that.
Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Motion to accept, motion to accept the school improvement plan by Mr. Santoro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, all in favor. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for joining us, and you can proceed if you would like.
Sure. Good evening, school committee, Superintendent Mulvey, leadership team. My name's Janet Loftus, and it is with great pride that I'm able to present our school improvement plan as the principal of Lincoln Hancock, 10 years after my initial start at this school. The word "pride" is one that we do not take lightly at Lincoln Hancock. Within seconds of walking through the doors of this school, it's easy to fully understand how great our students and our staff are. The positive atmosphere, the inclusiveness for all of our children, and the dedication from our staff to meet children where they are is second to none. The growth that our students show, academically and emotionally, from the start of the year to the end, is unmatched, and I am so happy that this year, not last, our data across all assessments showed this tremendous growth. We decided to take a look at the past two years' worth of data. As a staff, this approach enabled us to dive a bit deeper into what the data was showing. As you saw in my data reflection on pages five and six, our MCAS growth and our MAP growth exceeded the typical and projected growth respectively. Our EL students exceeded their target growth on MCAS, and we also earned four out of four points in chronic absenteeism, which is a very big deal for us. We also met our, or exceeded, last year's school improvement plan goals in almost every category. To say I'm proud is a huge understatement. Last year, we took a hard look at scheduling and made some major adjustments in order to increase the children's time on learning and to have more of an aligned support schedule. While it's not perfect, we will continue to tweak the scheduling in order to maximize student engagement and support while they are in our building.
Good evening, my name's Kristin Dewire, I'm the assistant principal at Lincoln Hancock School. I started in 2011 as a kindergarten teacher, and I became the assistant principal in 2019. So as a former kindergarten teacher, I'm going to talk about all the warm and fuzzy things that we do at Lincoln Hancock. In looking at our vocal survey, we are extremely proud that 99% of our students think that their teacher cares about them as a person, that 99% of our students believe that teachers, students, and the principal work together to stop bullying, and that 96% of our students believe that the teachers at the school accept me for who I am. This year, we have encouraged increased communication and focusing on positivity, especially to reaching out to families that are new to Quincy. All of our newsletters are sent now via S-MoR, so that everything is translated into our family's home language. We have encouraged teachers... an email, or a phone call, and it's been a huge success. We have made friendship bracelets and a welcome note, well, the peer leaders made friendship bracelets and a welcome note, to give to any new student who has recently joined our school. We've created a Bus Buddies program. We paired up our kindergarten friends with older student volunteers to act as role models and create new friendships in the neighborhood. Soccer at recess has been a resounding success. Students who speak all different languages and from all over the world join together to play a common sport. We've had a huge pride reboot. So we have, our guidance team has introduced the pride letters, perseverance, respect, independence, dependability, and effort. One letter a week in the fall, so the entire school knew what it meant to be the pride by the first week in October. We've even had some fun initiatives for teachers, like the Lucky Lion. Every Friday, we pick a new teacher who gets to wear some special bling with a lion necklace. We can send pictures if you want to see it. It really is something. And for report card conferences this year, we have sent out a Google Sheet Translate, so parents could request translators beforehand, and that was met with a huge success. So all of these things lead into our social-emotional learning goal, our goal number four. Our goal was for the student support team will create a tracking system to support decreasing student office referrals for discipline reasons and increasing the use of purple paws. So our guidance team created a necklace, a purple necklace with a pause, I'll take a breath, I'll ask for help, I can take a walk, and the students can come and visit a support person in the building, Ms. Loftus or myself, our nurse, or even a favorite teacher, just to show that they need a little break and that it's not necessarily a behavioral issue. It's been working very, very well so far. We've also been using Open Parachute, Restorative Justice, and our PBIS reboot as well to help decrease office referrals for discipline reasons.
In looking at our academic goals for this year, the pull to keep things right where they are and keep shooting to maintain our high growth was very strong. However, there were some glaring elements that we are going to dive a bit deeper into this year and into the fall of the following year. While our growth is strong, our achievement in MCAS and DIBELS is still behind the district. Not by a lot, but it's still behind. What we have noticed over the past years is that our DIBELS scores in the fall have been quite behind the Quincy average. This means that our students' critical skills that are necessary for reading success are below benchmark at the start of the school year, particularly in our incoming kindergartners. We see our greatest growth in learning to read in grades K through 2 from January, middle of the year assessments, to the spring. That's where we shine. The routines are in place, the children understand the expectations, and there's so much teaching and learning without interruption. However, our data is showing that there's a bit of a slide from when the children leave us in the summer, and then it takes time to reconnect those dots come fall. This spotlight has been shown on our lower scores coming in, and our lower achievement on MCAS has brought us back to the drawing board of how we can support individual achievement while maintaining our high growth. For our goals in math, ELA, and science for this year, we are going to dive deeper into our students' individual scores, their individual projected growth, and where they fall on the learning continuum, which is aligned with our MAP data, so that we are able to clearly mark where we want them each to land in each subject by the end of the year. We are ready to get our families involved in this process by communicating these individual goals and by having our students also take ownership of how smart they are and how far they can go over the course of the school year.
Our plan to boost our kindergarten DIBELS scores is use our extended ed programs. So we will be having a kindergarten boot camp of sorts in the spring as an invite only to focus on those students that we know we can catch up by the time of the spring DIBELS, the final DIBELS. And then our goal is to have those same kids in another extended ed program in the fall when they're in first grade to help regain from that summer slide and get those skills back together. Our kindergarten team is working on a recorded parent academy that has translated to help explain what they can do at home to work with their children, what different parts of literacy are, literacy are, and developmentally what is appropriate for their children regarding independence and literacy skills at home. This idea is still evolving, but hopefully it'll be ready for fall of next year.
In closing, I would be remiss if I did not stop to thank a few people. Our PTC is absolutely fantastic. The support of our school and our community is something that I am just so beyond impressed with. The partnership with Southwest, I am grateful to Courtney Mitchell and her team for continuing to work together to strengthen our community and create opportunities for our children to go up to that school and for them to come down. The building department, Walter McDonald, Paul Hines, Dave Scott, and the maintenance department and their teams, who were able to build two new classrooms out of thin air this summer, and for fixing the entrance to our school, which was a huge job. And the IT department that got all of those new spaces up and running by the first day of school, it was outstanding. And of course, our superintendent's leadership team and everyone behind us, they are always just a phone call away, and they support us without pause. I'm so very grateful for the Lincoln Hancock staff and their tireless work, as well as their input and feedback as we continue to work to always improve our practices for the sake of our students. From the outside, Lincoln Hancock is a huge monster of a building. But from the inside, it is a kind, compassionate, accessible school for all, where our students and families, no matter what their background, no matter what their experiences, feel a part of our Lincoln Hancock community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santoro.
What you forgot to say, Kristin, was that you were pro-graduate from Quincy High? Also, that your mother served on this committee so deservingly. How's she doing?
She's doing wonderful. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you for what you've done for such a wide range of children, whether it's income, capabilities. It's just a congratulation for the growth in the population that you serve. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
Ms. Cahill.
I was lucky enough to come to the backpack day.
Thank you for that.
And honestly, I loved that day, and, you know, you had over 500 kids in the cafeteria auditorium space there. They were amazing, so control, you know, controlled but in a nice way, happy. It was just, it was a great experience for me to come in there and see how your student population, your staff, the faculty that day. It was just, I left there feeling really good about the work that you do in there, on top of all this work that you do academically. The fact, when you do, what I loved that you just presented on was the three times a year and letting, making sure every student has a day or a time when they're acknowledged for, you know, who they are, kindness, or whatever kind of acknowledgement that you give them. Because when we always talk about, you know, if you feel like you belong, then you're going to come to school, and you're going to feel good, and you'll have a better opportunity to learn. And that three times a day, a year, I think, doesn't leave anyone out, and they feel that. I love that. And I also think the purple paws, we can all learn from that, even myself at home. And the other thing that I, that I liked that you said was the family involvement in terms of the DIBELS, because, you know, if you have that population of students, families that are not English language, you know, reading is probably not something that they can be effective in helping their kids to, you know, master some reading skills. So I think doing that is, and if it's successful, is probably going to be a huge, make a difference for the kids. So, but thank you for the work that you do. Obviously, we know when we see, you know, the growth and the support that you all give each other, not just to the kids, I think is what makes the difference in the building. So, but thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. I have to reiterate what she said. I think the growth is phenomenal in your school, and you meet kids where they're at, and you advance them, and you take them from wherever they're coming from. And so we understand, we recognize the growth and how important that is, we really do. The MCAS scores will come, and I think as you identify the two-year cohort, I'm very impressed by that because I always thought everyone should be doing that. Didn't know why, though, but you explained it better than I did. So I was really, really, really happy to hear that also. But we do understand where your kids are coming from, and seeing that growth is enormous. It really is enormous. It's the most important thing you do. I think the vocal survey is incredible, too. It is a great, monstrous building. I'm still concerned, I know the absenteeism met its goal, but it's really high.
We are taking a new approach this year with our absenteeism. We're so grateful, I should have put them on there to thank you for our attendance officers, but Kristin and I are taking a monthly stance on attendance. So at the end of every month, we are, the two of us, sending letters, making phone calls, and having families in. Nine times out of 10, it's not that families in elementary school don't want their children to come to school, it's that there are embedded struggles that they need help just getting around. And I think what we're really learning this year, doing this on our own first and then taking that next level to our attendance officers, is that so many families don't want to ask for help or don't want to ask for support. We're an early school, that first bell rings at 7:40. So a lot of just knowing and reaching out monthly and tracking the same families every month. We're still here, we're still watching. I'm hoping we'll have a bit of a positive effect.
I hope so, too, because it's hard to get the rest of the stuff if they're not in front of you. I mean, it really is, it's really difficult to do. Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you for the presentation. That was really great. So I start off, I absolutely love the shout-outs again, as Mrs. Cahill said, and the purple paws. I think that's phenomenal to do that. I think that's really great. With the attendance, I know years ago, your school was an issue with half-days, with not coming in on that day in particular. Is that still an ongoing issue with your school?
It is.
Yeah. I knew that was, that had been even prior to COVID, that was, that had been an issue that I remember hearing about. And with the, and you created, the creation of two classrooms, that's wonderful. I see you need another one. Have you any idea of where that one could possibly go?
Yes. So we will have a sixth, fourth grade, which means we'll have six at every grade level by next year. We have one classroom that right now is art that we could potentially put on a cart, which we have done in the past, and make that back into a classroom. But otherwise, I don't know that there's much more room at the end.
Yeah, I didn't think so. When I saw additional, I'm like, where are you going to create another classroom there?
Yeah, they've done wonders, but that was a classroom, so we just, you know, we'll obviously work with the superintendent's team and see what the next step is. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. McGully. Ms. Santoro.
I just want to say, we scoured the plans to see if there are any gaps so that we can ask questions, but you covered everything, and I just want to also offer my kudos on the MCAS and the MAP growth and the vocal data that everybody talked about. I mean, it was really nice. I agree with Mrs. Lebo on the chronic absenteeism issue, and just want to say I applaud your new goals and the targeted approach on DIBELS, and I love the partnership with Southwest. Keep it up. Good stuff.
And it's great to see the partnership with you two, too. Strengthen numbers, for sure.
Absolutely.
Motion to accept, Mr. Santoro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, all in favor. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs. Sullivan.
Good evening.
You may start your plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Well, thank you for the opportunity to present Squanam School Improvement Plan. Special thanks to Mayor Koch, Kevin, Erin, the QPS leadership team, and this body for your continued support of Quincy Public Schools and the Squanam School community. This support also includes the exciting new Squanam School building project as part of the MSBA's program. Your guidance and resources have undoubtedly helped our students, staff, and families to continue moving forward with not only academic successes, but supports that work to create a strong sense of community and belonging at Squanam School. That said, I am here to present the plan that demonstrates the commitment of our staff to provide stronger academic programs and social-emotional supports for our students. This plan is also consistent with the work. Many of our staff did this past spring and summer as part of a visioning process with architects and educational planners for the new building project. The visioning workshops were designed to promote thinking about our current and future educational goals and priorities and how we can connect these practices and possibilities into innovative design plans for the new Squanam School. We were certainly energized by this process and the official beginning of the planning and design phase of the new project. It is our hope this plan serves as a reflection of our current and future goals and priorities. I also wanted to say thank you to the entire Squanam staff for your tireless efforts, compassion, and professionalism as we constantly work to review and refine our teaching and programs and practices at the school. I am very fortunate to be surrounded by a great team from our custodians, classroom teachers, paraprofessionals, interventionists, lunch matrons, and office staff. Thank you to all of them on so many levels. And of course, thank you to our incredible Squanam students, parents, and guardians. Your support, confidence, trust, and engagement are truly appreciated, as I know we all share common goals to provide our students with safe, engaging, and supporting school programs. That engagement was on full display this morning at our winter concert, where we had two sessions that were completely filled the gym, so it was really exciting to see. We do, however, recognize that we have so much work to do, but we are incredibly proud to share some strong data in this plan supporting the collective work of our community. The following are just a few highlights of our plan and the work we are all doing all of the time to support student progress and social-emotional well-being of our students and our own professional growth. You can see from our reflection, beginning on page five, that we met or partially met each of our goals from the previous year, and that we continue to analyze MAP, Amplify, MCAS, access results, and other assessment data to inform our teaching, professional development, as well as assessing academic losses. For example, Squanam EL students demonstrated a 67.6% rate in making progress towards English language proficiency. This number is significantly higher than last year, and this was an area we focused on in our school improvement planning this past cycle, and we are proud to report that we exceeded all of our state-determined targets. We are also proud of our school-wide work on writing and efforts to prepare for the different types of questions on the MCAS test. This work continues to return positive results as we average 13 percentage points above the state in our assessed grades on constructed responses and 18 percentage points above the state on essay questions, with a high of 37 points in third grade. We are proud to present you with four strong goals and action steps, starting on page 17, aligned to the district's improvement plan in ELA, math, science, and steps for supporting the social-emotional needs of our students. We have also added a new column to the action step chart this year, showing if the steps have been revised, continued, or new to this plan. This plan includes a social-emotional goal on page 35, highlighted by our work with the Open Parachute Program and restorative practices to help students manage difficult situations at school, home, or in the community. This program is a continuation of our recent school-wide efforts to help students develop the skills to safely resolve issues and manage conflicts during the school day. We have fully implemented the illustrative math program and have teachers committed to district-wide teams outlined by the recently approved math improvement plan at the district level. We are moving closer to full implementation of the Core Knowledge Language Arts CKLA curriculum program, and also have a number of Squanam teachers included on district-wide CKLA teams and the CKLA Council. We continue to provide engaging after-school programs focused on making positive connections and supporting students in the classrooms. Examples include the New Community and Belonging Club, the BOX Program, Student Council, writing workshops, and math and ELA support programs. We are very proud of the collaborative efforts of our PBS and DEI teams as we implemented a number of school-wide programs and initiatives geared to promoting kindness, acceptance, and inclusion throughout the school community. These efforts include a Unity Day program in October focused on a strong anti-bullying message, and just last month, a school-wide lesson around Native American heritage and culture. We are excited to share that we have joined these two teams moving forward and created the Community and Belonging Team with common goals and one mission statement that speaks to our school-wide efforts to promote positivity and inclusiveness all of the time. This is the most popular team in the school for our staff, as we have almost 15 staff members that meet weekly on these initiatives. You can see on page 16 that Squanam students returned a vocal index score- in October, focused on a strong anti-bullying message, and just last month, a school-wide lesson around Native American heritage and culture. We are excited to share that we have joined these two teams moving forward and created the Community and Belonging Team with common goals and one mission statement that speaks to our schoolwide efforts to promote positivity and inclusiveness all of the time. This is the most popular team in the school for our staff, as we have almost 15 staff members that meet weekly on these initiatives. You can see on page 16 that Squanum students returned a vocal index score consistent with last year and above the state in all vocal categories. We are proud to share that Squanum students have positive impressions regarding our school climate, the environment, safety, and bullying at the school. We are so proud of these efforts as we believe there is a direct connection to the efforts of our Community and Belonging Team, our social emotional supports, and the work of our Student Council. We continue to engage families with so many forms of communication using the SMOON newsletter platform, emails, websites, personal notes home, and other platforms, including the district's social media coordinator, Kelly Powers. You can see more of our family engagement activities on page 44. We are also looking forward to working with our very supportive PTO to plan engaging family events and programs over the course of the school year. These were just a few highlights from our plan, and we hope this gives you a sense of all the hard work and pride we have in the Squanum School community. Thank you again for your support, and I certainly welcome your feedback or any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Ms. Cahill?
I really don't have any questions. Thank you. Looks like you're doing a great job. You have, you have it under control.
Thank you. It's exciting.
Mrs. Hoobley.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is wonderful. This is a really great, great presentation. I just have one question. Do you know who the local author is that you're going to be having come in, or is that not, not?
I do know. Ms. Healy set it up, who's the new assistant principal, and she's outstanding. I can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
That's in February, I believe.
It said January, so I thought maybe you might know.
I think it was pushed to February, but I'll get that.
Oh, great. Thank you.
In fact, she's probably going to text me.
Mr. Gattuso?
Excellent presentation, Steve.
Thank you.
And concur, great family engagement. I mean, you offer a lot. One question, and you, you heard the preview before from the other principals, but chronic absenteeism, all but one of your categories grew. Can you speak to the efforts around that?
I think the efforts obviously start with the grade-level teams, but with your support, we added a second guidance counselor this year, so we have more support, and we can, we can look at reasons as to why. We certainly reach out to all the students and identify through our student support teams, which meets weekly, and we go over with the, the school resource officer and, and the district supports in that. So it's something that, for students that, that we feel that chronic absentee is an issue, it's something we talk about weekly in our support teams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gattuso. Ms. Cahill?
What time does Squanum start?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen. Okay. Because when I heard the 7:40, I'm like, well, that would be, I might miss school at 7:40, too. But if, if you're seeing the same kind of numbers at eight fifteen, then, you know, it's something maybe, it's probably not the start time. That's the issue.
Right.
I was just curious if it was the same time. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. See, the student engagement is incredible, too. The activities that you have are so, so inclusive. It was really great. I have no questions. Mr. McGee, you have a question?
No, I just, I was at 10 years.
Thank you. I'm proud of the place, obviously.
Motion to accept the plan by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Santoro. All in favor?
Could I just say, Christine Evans, Ms. Healy came through. I'm lucky to have her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening. Thank you both so much for coming. It's great to have you. We're excited to hear your plan.
Good evening, Mayor Koch, members of the school committee, Superintendent Mulvey and Assistant Superintendent Perkins. It's my pleasure to be here to present to you on behalf of the staff and families of Snug Harbor, the 23-24 School Improvement Plan. With me tonight is our assistant principal, Diane Babcock. As I begin my second year as principal of Snug Harbor, I'm proud to be a principal of a school as inclusive as Snug Harbor. From our amazing pre-K students to our awesome fifth graders, each day, I see how much the families and staff care about the students at Snug Harbor. Both work together to make each day a great experience and a successful day for our students. This extends beyond the academics to ensure that our students feel safe and welcome at Snug. It is an incredible staff dedicated to providing the best possible experience for all of our students. At Snug, we work hard to offer our students a variety of after-school programs to meet their interests. I'd like to highlight a few of those for you tonight. Every fall, our staff runs Snug Soccer. Approximately 60 of our students participate in this after-school program. They are on four teams and play a series of games. It looks like a youth soccer series. We even have many family members who watch and cheer on all of our students. This year, even a grandmother came to every session, and she even brought snacks for the kids when she came. Another after-school program we have is called Smile Bunch, a group of students who meet twice a month to make cards for elderly people in Quincy and around the world. On the first day, one of the students told me as she was heading home, that she had made three cards that day, and another student had told me she made two cards, but with beautiful drawings of flowers. And the last event I'd like to highlight is our first Cozy Up with a Good Book Night. The goal of this event was to provide new or gently-loved books for all of our students. So many of our staff contributed in a variety of ways to make this a success. During the event, there were approximately 15 crafts for students to do raffles, and every student left with at least five books to add to their home library. One mother was telling me that night how she had read the first Harry Potter book years ago, and she was now reading the second. She was sitting on the floor of our gymnasium with one of her kids, reading that book while her son was next to her, reading another book. We had, we had over 200 members of our school community attend. And we have many other great after-school activities that Ms. Babcock will highlight shortly. And last, we have continued the community tradition of holding a Memorial Day ceremony honoring the six heroes from Germantown. Now, looking at our data for last year, we have identified areas to focus on for this school year. As seen on page six in ELA, we have identified the cluster of integration of knowledge and ideas as an area for us to focus on. In the mathematics, we have identified different areas to focus on depending on the grade level, as noted on page eight. Schoolwide, we have added monthly grade-level meetings where grade-level teams and administration meet to review data, allow for peer observations, and provide the opportunity for common planning time. More specific action steps will be highlighted in our 23-24 goals. I am most excited to highlight the growth that our students experienced in all grades and subjects last year in both MCAS and MAP testing. On MAP ELA testing from fall to spring, our students have shown high levels of growth, meeting or close to meeting these grades, close to meeting the projected RIT growth levels in these grades, sorry. On page six, in grades two and three, we were close to the national norms. While fourth and fifth grades were below the norm, they still experienced significant growth in ELA. And in mathematics, on page nine, our students saw high growth on MCAS and MAP testing. On MCAS, our students had high growth in all areas. In grades two through five on MAP testing, we exceeded our projected growth scores. Grades two and three saw over 17 RIT points of growth, and four and five saw over 10 RIT points of growth. And in science, on page 14, our students showed growth in grades four and five on the MAP assessment. In fourth grade, while slightly under the projected growth, they made significant overall growth, and grade five exceeded the projected growth score. Another area that I would like to highlight on page 10 is the growth our CARE students had. In ELA, 74% of students received a rating of progressing, and in math, 79% of those students received this rating. And this progress is due to the hard work of our CARES team and students. Now, we'd like to reflect on last year's goals. In ELA, on page 12, we exceeded our goal in grades two, three, and five by several RIT points. And in grade four, while we did not meet our goal, our students made progress, missing the goal by six tenths of a point. In our mathematics goal on page 13, we exceeded the goal in all grade levels. The students scored between 10, four, and 10 RIT points above our stated goal. And in our science goal on page 14, we showed growth in grades four and five, exceeding our goal by two RIT points in each grade.
Our school-wide social and emotional goal to implement monthly SEL lessons have proven to be a successful initiative for us. This is, this was a successful task, in large part because we recently added an additional guidance counselor. Thank you to all that made that happen. These lessons have proven to be a valuable tool, tool to promote positive social and emotional well-being and personal growth among our students. When examining the three dimensions of our school climate, engagement, safety, and environment through the vocal data, there are many areas of positive growth in our school. For example, students in both grades four and five endorsed responses on the vocal survey that indicate that they feel valued, cared for, and supported by school staff. This is shown by 100% of grade four students indicating that their teachers care about them as a person, and 100% of grade five students stating that their teachers support students who come to class upset. These examples are indicative of the commitment that our Snug Harbor staff have to their students. Through continued analysis of the vocal data, there were also dimensions of our school climate that we would like to strengthen. For example, within the data, only 47% of our grade four students and 48% of our grade five students feel that students try to stop bullying when they see it happening. Our hope is through explicit social and emotional instruction, we can empower our students to recognize and help resolve perceived bullying instances in our school. Tonight, I'm going to highlight our ELA goals. This year, we wanted to create goals that reflect specific cohorts of students. As you'll see, there are a variety of measures that we will utilize to show growth in the area of ELA. More specifically, on page 16, students in kindergarten and grade one will show evidence of achievement in DIBELS benchmark subtest nonsense word fluency and correct letter sound, as measured by an increase of 10 points. On the MAP benchmark, on page 17, we are striving for marked improvements in the instructional area of informational text, with eight RIT points increase in grade two, an increase of five RIT points for grade three, and an increase of three RIT points for grade four and five above the fall average on the MAP assessment. Finally, on page 19, within our language development program, our hope is to see at least 50% of our students increase their overall score on the QuickPhonics screener by five or more points by spring of 2024. Sprinkled within each of these ELA and MAP goals are CARE-specific action steps. Our CARE students access or enter the learning standards through a variety of entry points on a continuum from less complex to more complex as they approach grade-level standards.
For this year, on page 20, our math goal is to increase our RIT score in grades two through five by seven RIT points in the instructional area of operations and algebraic thinking. We're continuing at the full implementation of IM at all grade levels and to utilize small group instruction through guided math centers. We are supporting our teachers with a math coach who works with staff on IM implementation. Math talks and manipulatives continue to be used to develop a deeper understanding of the mathematics our students are learning. Our math interventionists work with classroom teachers, pushing into the classes during the math blocks, providing targeted instruction to students. And in science, on page 22, our goal is to increase our MAP RIT scores in grades four and five by three points in the earth and space science instructional area. We will continue to use the Pearson Elevate Science Program and Realize Science online program in grades three through five. And in our kindergarten through second grades, they will use Pearson Science, the Scholastic Magazine, and STEM Engineering Reader Lessons that align with the science content. And new this year, our fourth and fifth graders will use the iXL online platform and will create research projects to develop a deeper understanding of student-chosen topics.
Our social and emotional goal on page 24 focuses on continuing to carry out ways to support our students outside of the parameters of academics. During the 23-24 school year, with support from guidance and administration, the Snug Harbor teachers will do at least one SEL lesson in each classroom once per month, in order to increase student engagement, social, social and emotional well-being, and personal growth. While dissecting this goal, we felt that it was imperative to add a unique addendum, a part B, if you will, which will focus on decreasing the number of students who fell within the chronically-absent category. More specifically, 30% of our students who have been identified as high-needs were categorized as chronically-absent last year. We are implementing the traditional interventions, such as regular meetings with attendance officers, letters. We felt strongly that we needed to think sort of outside of the traditional box. We are hoping, through action steps, working with our BCBA, that we will provide a supportive approach to our families in regards, regards to attendance. This may include something as simple as creating visual schedules or token systems for home usage, or assemblies, bulletin boards to celebrate noteworthy attendance, or something as significant as parent academies that will help families connect with outside services such as DDS and Mass Health, where they can access services through the Massachusetts Behavioral Health Partnership. Throughout the school year, we will also work to promote these same elements in our extended ed programs. One such example is our targeted, small-group academic intervention programs for at-risk students at every grade level, including students in our substantially separate programs. Additionally, unique programs such as the Orton-Gillingham and social, a social pragmatics group for students who need social coaching, will also support our diverse students with their diverse needs. We continue to have our student leadership groups and our highly-sought-after athletic programs such as Snug Soccer and Snug Basketball, and a new program, as Scott mentioned, is our Smile Club, which is a year-long community service project of writing letters to senior citizens. These eclectic programs encourage students to set goals, make academic strides, and in some cases, promote personal growth. Next, our family engagement was an area of refinement for us. Throughout the last year, we have worked to solidify our PTO assembly and provide more meaningful initiatives and events for our families. We began the school year with popsicles with the principal and our second annual chunk retreat, and we recently held our first Cozy Up to a Good Book. And as Scott mentioned, this event yielded over 200 people in attendance. Our hope is that this will be a catalyst for more exciting and meaningful family engagement opportunities throughout the school year.
So in closing, I'd like to thank the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the entire SLT, Mayor Koch, and you, the school committee, for your continued support. Without your support, we will not be as successful as we are. So thank you very much. I would also like to thank the incredible staff of Snug Harbor. Their caring is evident every day in all their interactions with our students. They are the reason our students love to come to school each day, and they do. You could see it in their smiles every day as they dance down the halls in the morning when they're putting their coats away in our, in the lockers that were just recently installed this year. And of course, I'd like to thank our families for their support as well. And finally, I want to thank our, our students, from fifth grade down to our pre-K kids. They're the reason we get up every day and we go to school. Their smiles, their enthusiasm are contagious, and they motivate us each and every day. So in closing, I will share with you Snuggie's Code, which recited each day. Be safe, be kind, be respectful, and work hard. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Santoro, you good? Ms. Cahill?
I'm, I'm good. But thank you so much for all the work that you've been doing. Because I know it's a lot. You have, you have a lot on your plate here, and it appears that you're getting the work done for the kids. And my only, my only actual concerns are more so some of the small, I don't know if they're small, but some of the physical facility issues that you're having. But we'll talk about that in facilities, you know, why some of those things can't get addressed, you know. But that's it. But thank you. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you also for not only having a language development program goal. I think that's amazing. I haven't seen anything like that before. And also the, using in reflecting on the CARES data, it's, it's a really big deal to embrace that part of your community and the K1 goal in ELA, to, to see something like that, to embrace the whole community as you move forward.
Both are big parts of our community, so we want to make sure we include everyone.
They are very important parts of all of our community. So I'm really glad that we're hearing about them, that you're raising them to the level of the rest of the students. And I'm very happy to see your chronic absenteeism goal. Still very concerning, a very concerning number. And I just had a question. Do you also have high absences on the half-day Wednesday?
I would say that our absenteeism rate is kind of, it's spread across
It is spread across.
of the week. Wednesday, we have, we have identified some families that do some, take Wednesdays, but overall, it's a, it is kind of across.
I wonder if it's a childcare issue, though, with Wednesdays. Yeah, and your vocal data is wonderful, too. Mr. Santoro?
And this is to the superintendent. Somehow, we've got to get these people more money. Because when you look at the money that comes in with other BTOs, it's very unfair. We're talking schools that raise $20,000 versus $3,000. It makes a difference to the opportunities these people can provide. Somehow, they need to get more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur.
I concur, too, but I think the way it's best handled is to increase the activities stipend account based on the demographics of the building, so that we can get to the populations that are unable to create as much resources for the school as opposed to just counteracting PTOs, because that would never work.
Oh, yeah. No, no, for sure.
Mrs. Hoobley.
This is wonderful, wonderful. I love your parent engagement and absolutely love the vocal survey. I was just going to say, the amount of one-hundreds in your fourth graders and even the hundred-and-ones, I mean, that's, that's amazing, you know.
I'm not sure how we got that, but we will certainly take it.
I'm like, that's impressive. But yeah, I know that, especially when they're in, when they're in categories like, you know, But yeah, no, especially when they're in categories like, you know, my teachers are proud of me when I work hard at school, 100% of fourth graders. That's great that they feel that way.
All our teachers love what they do, and they love the kids that they work with, and it shows, and they know it. The kids know it, so.
Yeah, that's just wonderful.
It is an absolute reflection of the staff of Snug Harbor, how much they care about the kids.
And it was reflected in here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm impressed with the data going up in most areas and working towards getting the rest of them out. What you're doing in your school really does make it a community school. So keep up the good work. I'm really impressed with what you've done in two years.
Thank you. It's a team effort, and we all work together.
I know that.
Thank you.
I wrote down many of the same things, especially the growth in the CARES students, I thought was super impressive. Congrats on meeting so many goals. You know, I wonder on the chronic absenteeism if we should talk about it more broadly with Mrs. Perkins, just to figure out what we can do to help the principals and assistant principals in some way. Maybe we could have a discussion about that outside of school by school and inquisiting each of them. And then the last thing that I, and again, all of the facilities are going into facility, we're going to talk about them later, but is the water in the basement new or is it chronic? And if it's been there, has it been tested for mold, as far as you know?
It's been a continuing problem. Last, no, sorry. Earlier this year, I reached out to, I'm not sure if it was Parks or Highway, I forget which department it was. They came out and they cleaned out all of the drains around the building. That made a significant improvement in allowing the water to drain appropriately outside. But when we have heavy rains, such as last night, we still get water in there. I do not know if it has been tested.
Okay. We'll raise it. Thank you.
Motion to accept, Mr. Santoro. I accept my line, Mrs. Cahill, all in favor. I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for joining us, and you can present your plan.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here. Good evening, members of our school committee, Superintendent Mr. Kevin Melvey, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Erin Perkins, and the entire superintendent's leadership team. It is such an honor to present to you tonight. Here with me is our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Laura Latini, and together we will present to you our school improvement plan for the 2023-2024 school year. This plan is a product of thorough analysis conducted collaboratively by our exceptional teachers with their incredible insight due to invaluable years of experience. This plan was also shared with all members of the Beechwood Knoll School Council and our incredibly supportive families. We are proud to share our true community plan with rigorous goals that are specific and measurable for the upcoming school year and target the actionable areas of improvement our community has identified. Our spring data supports continuous high achievement for Beechwood Knoll students, with most notably our fifth-grade students performing in the 92nd percentile for the state of Massachusetts in science. Our ELA and mathematics scores mirror one another with an average scaled score of 497. These scores are consistent with the district averages and maintain our school history of achieving above the state across all subject areas. These scores also place Beechwood Knoll in the 76th percentile in the state for progress on our recovery path set by the Massachusetts Department of Education Accountability Measures. Before taking a closer look at our data to highlight areas of success and improvement, I first want to take a look at the changing demographics of Beechwood Knoll. In the last six years, Beechwood Knoll's English language population has increased from around 15% historically to 18% in 2022 and 20% in 2023. To best meet the needs of these learners, an EL tutor was hired in September 2021 to service this population with our full-time EL teacher. This September, we increased our EL staff to two full-time EL teachers. Together, these staff members service 77 students, accounting for 23% of our current school population. We thank you greatly for your support of this for our students. Our special education numbers have maintained consistent historically. Through routine ILT and student support meetings, we use data to inform decisions about student intervention, including literacy for supporting primary skills and math since the addition of interventionists last September. Further measures of screening will be implemented this school year with the DZ Early Literacy Screening Guidance of additional routine progress monitoring of indicated students below or well below grade level. Additionally, our population of high-need students is also increasing to 60% of our school population over the last five years. While the diverse community of Beechwood Knoll learners is changing, high achievement continues to remain the theme of our data. English Language Arts is a high priority area of our school improvement plan for Beechwood Knoll at this time. Despite steadily growing in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in MCAS achievement, our overall scaled score has hovered around 500 since 2021, falling slightly overall last year in grades three through five. Despite this, there are some bright spots, including grade four students achieving five points higher in their overall scaled score, jumping from the overall lowest percentile of the three grades to the highest, the lowest performing student subgroup making progress towards improvement targets, resulting in two points overall in our accountability measures, and former EL students scoring an average scaled score of 505, the highest of any subgroup, and eight points above our school average scaled score overall. Our English Language Arts goal is designed around individual student projection, which is set in the fall using the MAP assessment. Our goal also includes a measure of increasing the percentage of students at or above benchmark from established baselines in our primary grades, kindergarten, and one. Unique data-driven action steps are set for grades K to two as well as three to five and will directly target essay question types and the writing domain as well as informational text components based on MAP data analysis. It is evident that Beechwood Knoll is making progress in mathematical achievement at this time. Across all grade levels, students in grades three through five scored the highest scaled scores on the spring 2023 MCAS in the last three years, with students in grades four achieving six points higher than in 2022 and eight points higher than in 2021. This progression is approaching pre-pandemic average scaled scores of just over 500. Our second goal, targeting mathematics, is designed around evidence of normative growth on MAP in the domain specifically of measurement and data and operations and algebraic thinking. This will be supported by action steps for grades K through five to directly target constructed response question types and the indicated domains. A rigorous goal to maintain our high achievement in science at Beechwood Knoll is proposed as our third goal in the plan. The data-driven action steps will directly target the domain of technology engineering as well as the continuous integration of science in our primary grades through daily play centers and morning STEM bins. The annual vocal survey gives us direct insight to our school climate from the perspective of our fourth and fifth grade students. Our vocal survey results for fifth graders are favorable overall, with all dimensions above the state, most notably being the bullying indicators, which is part of our school's safety climate. This data highlights that 98% of fifth graders reported that my teachers are proud of me when I work hard in school, 97% for adults working at this school treat all students with respect, and 96% for teachers at this school accept me for who I am. The vocal results also provide strategic areas of action for us at Beechwood Knoll in this coming school year. Our approach to addressing student needs is based on restorative practices, with a goal to explicitly guide students through social-emotional skills of coping and taking responsibility for their choices by targeting the specific standard of students respecting each other. In setting our goals and targeted action steps, we began with the foundation of scheduling that was reflective of the district goal of access and equity to tier-one instruction for all students. Across each content time, a tier-one block is preserved for whole-class instruction. There are then dedicated blocks for students to receive their intervention supports of English language, literacy, special education, as well as targeted small group instruction and reinforcing activities and games in the classroom. Another new design in our school-wide schedule is the incorporation of dedicated collaboration times for teachers to engage in powerful discussion, common planning, and analysis of student work. Teachers for kindergarten to grade two are meeting as grade-level teams on a three-week rotation, while teachers in grades three through five are meeting on a rotation in both grade-level teams as well as vertical teams for this important conversation. In the Quincy Public Schools, our mission is to always educate the whole child. With a focus on student support and engagement, our extended-day offerings for this school year offer a variety of enriching experiences for our students. This includes traditional offerings such as student council, box, and Lego robotics, as well as new initiatives of confidence club, culture club, and creative crafts. At Beechwood Knoll, we begin each day by instilling a sense of pride for what we like to call being a lobster for life. We showcase this by setting our expectations together, by reciting "Respect Yourself," "Respect Others," and "Respect Property" as a whole school over our morning announcements to be ready for our learning in the day ahead. The expectation of respect is the foundation of our PBIS program. We are conducting virtual student-led monthly assemblies utilizing green screen technology with the digital knowledge of Mrs. Latini. We are continuing the use of frequent red lobster tickets for reinstated expected behaviors as well as think sheets for students in need of redirection. We have also added Larry's Lobster Lounge, which is a calming space for students who need a break during their day. Our goal for all Beechwood Knoll students is to feel empowered to make good choices and advocate for their needs. Another new component of this school year is the development of coordinator teams. These teams will plan our various school culture and community initiatives. PBIS, as just mentioned, and DEI will be a continuation of the teams that are already in place. Additional teams include Read Across America, which is planning a book tasting for our annual reading celebration week to foster a love of reading. Community Engagement is planning for a winter book club featuring the novel In the Beautiful Country, as well as guest speaker offerings and volunteer appreciation, and a school-wide assemblies team that will help us resume The Art of Gathering, kicked off with an audience etiquette assembly just last week. In our commitment to DEI practices, we have expanded our calendar initiative. This year's calendar is entitled "Celebrating with Each Other" and is illustrated beautifully by our very own Beechwood Knoll students. This initiative began three years ago through the result of a family survey. The goal of the calendar is to ensure purposeful and authentic learning and celebrations reflective of our community. We have collaborated on this calendar with our citywide EDI representatives as well as our school council. To accompany our calendar, our DEI team is asking students and their families to share a holiday they celebrate throughout the year so that we can learn about individual family traditions and create a holiday library to showcase these celebrations of our families at BKS. Our PTO also provides many activities to our whole school community. Driven by a dedication to host true community events that are free and accessible to all, our PTO is striving to promote authentic connections between school and home. With our first few events of a meet-and-greet at our community playground in August, a welcome-back-to-school movie night in September, and trunk-or-treat on the Friday before Halloween, the turnout has been astonishing to see students return to school many hours after the school day has ended, with big smiles on their faces and their family members in tow. Our school-to-family connection is also expanding to promote frequent two-way communication through the use of the district systems of School Messenger, Smore Newsletter, and the Language Line. These platforms provide daily access to communicating with all of our families. We also partnered with the district's webmaster, Kelly Powers, to relaunch our website, which is currently displaying all of our family newsletters that are accessible through translation. In closing, we present to you our Beechwood Knoll 2023-2024 School Improvement Plan with great pride as well as gratitude for your continued support. Thank you, school committee, for your extraordinary dedication in supporting these students of the Quincy Public Schools. We welcome your feedback and questions.
Ms. Cahill? I have a question for all of us. We have the low-income families, and we have it listed as families who meet the need for free lunch and, you know, is that, we all get free lunch now, don't we? Isn't that, I mean, for everyone?
Is there a certification process?
That they're using in terms of what the criteria is for that, to identify for low-income.
Because I think the reimbursements that we get are based on that data.
For the, okay, so we have to have that just for, okay, for reporting or whatever, reimbursement. And, you know, thank you for everything you do. Hi.
Hi.
So the other thing I had a question about is now that we have Kelly Powers, who's the webmaster, do you find that that's helping you with your communication with families and kind of keeping everyone on the same page where they can find information and all that? Do you find that to be a positive?
Absolutely. Through the use of School Messenger and Smore, it's so nice that digitally we're able to have everything translated, and then to be able to then have it on our public webpage as well through Kelly's assistance is great, just so that way we make sure that families can access it from multiple ways.
Yeah, I think that's amazing. Having her onboard has been, you know, has been a great positive for us. And your family engagement's great, so I think it's all good, and thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. Yeah, I just wanted to say, no one could drill down better than you could. What did you drill down?
Thank you.
So as you said, still recovering, but really impressive gains, really impressive gains. Love to see the DIBBLES goal in there with your yell. Your vocal student, your vocal, the fact that you made that a goal is so touching to me, really. And I hope, I think you'll get there to the 80% because that's really perfect if they see that happening, there with students respecting each other. So your absenteeism is amazing.
Thank you.
Obviously, everybody loves going, yeah? So that's a good thing. So I'm all set. Anybody else? Mr. Brigoli, Mr. Guttrug?
I just want to say that my, both of my boys went to Beechwood Knoll, so it's an amazing school. I love the school. I love the neighborhood. I love the PTO. I love the parent engagement, and both of you are continuing that tradition nicely, really nicely. And I also want to say that I love how you looked at the changing demographics, and you've already taken action. You know, you mentioned your approach on the EL learners' growth and all of that. That's like visionary, that's looking ahead and planning, so amazing.
Thank you.
Great school. Good effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Motion to accept the plan by Mr. Santoro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, all in favor. I, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You make us look good.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming, and you can present your plan, not that you had a choice, I guess.
Thank you. Last but not least, I guess, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your time. I am so proud to be the principal of Parker School and to present our school improvement plan to you this evening. When preparing for this evening's presentation, I thought of our school motto, "Be kind, be responsible, be the best you can be, the choice is yours." This motto was shared very loudly by our students at every assembly. First, be kind. Being kind- Being kind helps students both be a friend and make a friend at Parker. This was emphasized at our recent assembly with third graders saying, "You've got a friend in me." This is true. Everyone at Parker has a friend and is a friend. Each grade level leads an assembly on a character trait. First grade led an assembly in November on gratitude. I know I'm grateful for the teachers, children, and families of Parker. Kindness is in the culture at Parker. Because of this, students are engaged with their friends and their teachers, and families are engaged with Parker. Family engagement activities include popsicles on the playground, trunk-or-treat, and we just enjoyed cocoa craft night on Friday. We're looking forward to other family engagement activities this year, including our Lunar New Year celebration and our Family Literacy Night. Because of our culture of kindness, there is a strong sense of community. Students appreciate and value the diversity that makes Parker such a wonderful place to teach and learn. Examples of these activities include Lunar New Year, One School, One Book, Family Literacy Activities, and we're also planning another school-wide writing celebration, "I Am From" poems, that will celebrate the diversity of Parker. Because of our culture of kindness, students are engaged beyond the school day. We are fortunate to offer many after-school clubs, including Peer Leaders, Box, Game Club, STEM Club, Drama Club, Homework Club, and Robotics. I would like to now introduce Parker Assistant Principal Katie Welch, who will talk about being responsible.
Parker students are responsible, and they take pride in their learning. We have very high standards for our students at Parker. However, our high standards are balanced with a high degree of support. There is a safety net for students in need of intervention. Intervention groups are small, flexible, and data-driven. Our I L T process allows teams of teachers to work together to identify students in need of additional support and plan the appropriate interventions. We are fortunate to have an extensive support system for Parker students. This allows our students to be responsible and to achieve their very best. Intervention support at Parker includes two full-time literacy teachers, a part-time math interventionist, the support of four full-time EL teachers, as well as small class sizes. Additionally, we have two guidance counselors supporting the social and emotional needs of our students. Parker students are responsible, and through the support of the superintendent, his leadership team, and the school committee, they have the supports they need to achieve their very
Lastly, be the best you can be, the choice is yours. Be the best you can be means Parker students are taught the skills and knowledge they need to be successful and are given the supports they need to achieve their best. Parker is fortunate to have a great team of highly qualified and caring teachers who give their very best. Be the best you can be means teachers have the support they need to do their very best teaching their students. This includes small class sizes and extensive professional development. Be the best you can be means partnering with parents to support students and engage families in their children's education. Be the best you can be means celebrating the rich culture, traditions, and diversity of Parker. This also means committing to continuous improvement. This is why we're here tonight, presenting our school improvement plan and committing to the goals and action steps that will hopefully bring about lasting improvement. Our students will shout our motto, and I agree with them. Parker students are kind, responsible, and the best they can be, and I am proud to be their principal and share our school improvement plan with you this evening. Turning to our assessment results, these are a snapshot of student performance during the spring of two thousand twenty-three and show us there's work to be done, and we are working to close those gaps. Assessment highlights include, in the area of ELA, fifty-three percent of students are meeting or exceeding expectations. This is above the state average by nine percent. Forty-seven percent of fourth graders are meeting or exceeding the state average, exceeding expectations, excuse me, and this is above the state average by seven percent. Forty-eight percent of fifth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations, and this is above the state average by four percent.
Moving on to the area of math, sixty-five percent of our third graders are meeting or exceeding expectations, which is above the state average by fifteen percent. Forty-seven percent of fourth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations above the average for the state by seven percent, and forty-eight percent of our fifth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations above the state average by four percent. In the area of science, we have forty percent of fifth graders meeting or exceeding expectations, and although this is below the state average, it reflects a six percent increase when comparing results to two thousand twenty-two.
Next, our goals and action steps are a real team effort. Teachers work in teams to analyze data and differentiate instruction. Looking ahead to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four School Improvement Plan, Parker teachers will continue to support students' academic, social, and emotional growth. As we work towards this goal, specific focus will be given to how we can provide intervention and support to accelerate student learning and increase achievement. We have proposed ambitious goals using both MCAS and MAP data in reading, writing, mathematics, and science to document student progress. Parker teachers have, Parker teacher teams have developed action steps to meet these goals, and there is an emphasis on writing across the curriculum in our goals and action steps. Action step highlights include, in the area of ELA, our goal is to differentiate reading, excuse me, action steps include differentiating reading instruction, targeting intervention, and an emphasis on writing across genre and across the curriculum.
Our math goal emphasizes measurement and data. As teachers implement a new core resource, it is important to collaborate and examine our pacing to ensure that sufficient instructional time is devoted to the topic of math, of measurement and data. Students will continue to use their math journals and emphasize writing about multiple ways to solve a problem. Teachers at all grade levels will continue to use guided math and teach data-driven, flexible, and differentiated groupings. Additionally, we are fortunate to work with a math interventionist to support students in the area of math. Our science goal is supported by the integration of inquiry-based and hands-on activities, and implementation of the engineering is elementary curriculum in grades three to
Lastly, our social and emotional learning. Highlights of our social and emotional learning include implementation of open parachute, community circles, and restorative circles. DEI initiatives include a diversity theme to One School, One Book. Social and emotional learning supports include continued implementation of PBIS, guidance lessons, check-in, checkout, et cetera. To conclude, Parker School has wonderful students, supportive families, and caring teachers. It is a vibrant school community, and I am proud to be the principal. Thank you for your time and your continued support, and remember, be kind, be responsible, be the best you can be, the choice is yours.
Thank you so much. Mr. Santoro, goodness Cahill, do you have any questions, comments?
I have a question. I thought you were going to be specific to, I think when we started tonight, I was asking about cohorts going from like third, fourth, fifth grade, you know, and seeing how their growth is based on what those students might need across the way. So, when I'm looking at the MCAS data from two thousand twenty-three, and just, this kind of just kind of triggered me a little bit, was, so you had fourth grade in two thousand twenty-two, and they had forty-eight point nine percent, right? Now, in two thousand twenty-three, that fourth grade is in fifth grade, and now they're at thirty-five point four percent. So, you know, I know there's a lot of different factors, right? The content's different, you know, maybe the testing environment that day is different, kids are coming and going, different students, maybe, but is that something that we reflect on and like that's such a difference?
We do reflect, and historically, our third grade's scores are especially strong. Looking, I think partly might be due to implementing two new curricular resources, which is why an action step this year, particularly in the area of math, to look at pacing. Measurement and data is often taught at the end of a program, and we want to make sure we have time that those lessons are taught throughout the year. So, I think through common planning time at different grade levels and then vertical, making sure that that curriculum is addressed so there aren't gaps at testing time.
Yeah, okay, so that, so you do look at that, and that's something that, that's great. And I had a question, this is also a question, you know, system-wide. When we have the student councils, the school councils at the end of the presentations, council members, can you just give me an idea of what you do as a council? Like, do you meet a couple of times a year?
Well, our student council advisor is here this evening.
But in terms of this, are you asking about the school?
I missed hard to student council.
Yeah, yeah, school council, just, in terms of what, even just for all the schools, kind of what it's supposed to focus?
I look at it as, and I misinterpreted, I'm sorry, I thought you said student council. I look at our school council as an advisory group, presented the school improvement plan to them, welcomed their feedback, and they have been particularly helpful around issues of EDI and provided feedback, activities, used some of that input. We had a drumming group, we celebrated AAPI Month with family activities, so I look at it as kind of an advisory group.
Okay, great.
And they're also active members of our PTO in most cases as well.
And that's good, and you present the SIPS to them too, so that's good. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Brugoli.
I had the privilege of working with Margaret for a couple of years at Murray Mount, I'll just say that she's dedicated, smart, organized, and caring. And, you know, the children, the parents, the community are really lucky to have her. And she's going to continue to do great things over at Parker.
Well, we've got a great team, so thank you for that.
I've seen it through.
And that was only a couple of years ago, Paul.
It was a while ago, but I've seen it first.
Mr. Gattuso.
I just want to say thank you for letting me participate early in the year hitting up that fact. What I would do at that, I could feel the vibe, you know, it was just a great vibe to be there, and your vocal data speaks volumes about that vibe, and your teachers are remarkable, and just appreciate all you do.
Thank you, I agree, and I appreciate them.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I have no questions. I'm just very happy to see the vocal goal and your SEL goal, the vocal, I'm not, come on. I'm on it. I'm very happy to see the vocal goal in your survey too, it's really great, and I concur with Mr. Brugoli. True, and a great team, obviously a great team, a great collaborative team, which is great to see. In the essay development, I'm excited to see how well you do with that because I think it's such, so important, and it's a gap across the board, so it'd be nice to see how you do with that.
Thank you. I'm confident, I hope.
Take a motion too, by Mr. Santoro to accept the plan, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, all in favor. I say, I, thank you for waiting so long, we're sorry that we waited here so late. And just before we, before we stop for the evening, I have a question too about, I don't know, can we discuss something if it's sort of on the agenda or not really on the agenda? So, my question is, do we have to accept the PTO funds as we do gifts and grants? Because I've never seen PTO funding come to us, or what's being, but what it's being used for? I think maybe we should take a look at that, what it's being used for, and we're supposed to know what all the money that's coming into our schools are, and then go back to that other potential issue of maybe looking at the activity stipend account by high needs.
And we always make sure that they get.
I know. It'd be nice if we didn't have to, if they didn't have to ask.
They're properly funded.
Yeah. So, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Santoro, seconded by.
Thank you.